Turn off your cell phones and your other devices so not to disrupt the meeting. Anyone wishing to address the board?
Yeah.
My phone is talking to me.
Yeah, don't disrupt the meeting.
I just heard, no.
I think it was you watching.
Oh, my watch. I don't know why I'm not smart enough to turn it off. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come over to the microphone and state your name and address to the record. First item of the business is approval of minutes from October fourteenth.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns on the minutes? If you're going to call for vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the minutes are approved. Director, sign.
Before we get into the agenda, I would like to... We have three students with us again tonight. They're from the Missouri Board. It's always good to see young people getting involved in government, whether it's city government or not. So, Ellis Cranahan, Elise Whittenbach, and Julia Watson are all here. So, welcome. If you have any questions, feel free to ask away. So, the first case tonight, Mr. President, is case P twenty-seven Z twenty-five. The petition, Dumpsters Indiana LLC requesting the Kokomo City Planting Commission petition recommended the Kokomo Common Council for changes in zone classification from agricultural residential to MI modern intensity industrial. This is located at the Join Lot to the west of twenty-seven eighteen Zartman Road. And before we get into it, since we're off to such a good start tonight's meeting, we realized before the meeting that the staff report is not one hundred percent correct. The case was advertised correctly, so if you look at your picture, it's the lot next to this green C two lot. It's that small lot that's being rezoned, not the big A or parcel. Okay? Just so everybody knows what parcel we're looking at. Sorry about that.
Move to approve?
Second.
You want to hear Earl and Shaw talk about it?
Yeah, we probably should. Okay. We don't really... This is a nine-member voting board, and we... Tonight, we only have eight members. We have one that's not here. It takes five yeses or five noes to either approve a case or dismiss a case. So, if you want your case to be heard before the full nine-member board, that's entirely within your rights. So, just let that be known, and then you would get that. And if you want that to happen, it'll be continued to the next month's meeting. So, just... If you want it to be heard or not, that's absolutely fine as well.
Okay. We have motion in a second, correct?
We do.
Whoever represents this case, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Gavin Cox.
Can you give us a summary of what we're doing, please?
So, I also own the storage facility next to it. I want to allow both camper storage. And then, we have Dumpster Rangall as well. So, we will have dumpsters on the yard.
We need your address as well, I'm mistaken.
Do you know what that legal address was?
Just your address, your business address.
Oh, my address, ten seven oh six, west one hundred south, Bridgeville.
All right.
And you're also... The plan is to build some of the facilities from the house to this location.
Yes. Yep.
Any questions from the board before we ask staff report? Director, sign.
Staff report for case P twenty-seven Z twenty-five, Gavin Cox of Dumpsters, Indiana, has requested change in zone classification from agricultural residential to modern intensity industrial like manufacturing in order to utilize a lot as... Utilize lots as storage for work vehicles, personal boat, and camper. The joining properties are zones to the north, R one, very low density residential; R three, medium density single family residential; to the south, AR agricultural rural residential, OC office commercial, and C two, medium to large scale general commercial; to the east, AR agricultural rural residential, OC office commercial, C two, medium to large scale general commercial, and M two multifamily residential; and to the west, IS institutional use, AR agricultural rural residential, and R one, very low density residential. According to the City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, twenty-nine thirty is located in an area designated for general commercial and medium density residential. Typically, this area that... Typically, this category is for commercial uses that cater vehicle traffic with high disability from major roadways. A medium density residential is defined as being single-family housing of various types between three- to six dwelling units per acre, typical medium density housing, would-be single-family detached duplexes, triplexes, condominiums, townhomes, and cluster housing. Relevant land use goals to encourage orderly and responsible development to promote health, safety, and quality of life of residents in the City of Kokomo while maintaining Kokomo as a leading community for affordable housing. Relevant land use subject is our encouraging adequate land for residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, and recreational uses. Designate specific districts in the community suitable for residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, and recreational uses. The goal of the City Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Transportation Map is to enhance connections throughout the city for improved safety function and efficiency for all modes of transportation, including vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian networks. According to Transportation Map, this section of Zartman is defined as a local street. A local street is designed primarily to provide access to voting properties and destroy street traffic. The traffic count of this area is Zartman is one thousand nine hundred and five cars per day. The staff desires the board forward a favorable recommendation to the Kokomo Common Council.
Any questions from the board?
Did you... And I know you just said the staff report, and you did some updates. Is it twenty-seven eighteen the address? Not twenty-nine thirty, correct?
Well, this is on the corner of Zartman and Dixon, so there's actually two different addresses. Right?
Yeah, I think Rhonda assigned twenty-nine thirty Zartman Road as the address.
Yeah. I believe the Zartman Road is what's in our... Yes.
But when you put it on Beacon, it doesn't show up as an address, because she just issued that out. Thank you.
Can we talk about signage? Got signage ahead.
Really, there's a claim on any signage there?
Can we talk about the illegal signs that you have posted on Dixon and Zartman?
Yeah, what's illegal?
Beg pardon?
What's illegal?
Are you acting like you've never heard this before?
No, I just... The three signs that we've had there?
A stick sign is permitted in the city limits for thirty days, and it cannot be in the right way.
Okay.
You've had a stick sign on Dixon way past at least August. You've had...
Those have been removed.
Beg pardon?
Those have been removed now.
You must have moved them today.
They were removed yesterday, actually. Sorry.
You had them on Zartman since September.
Okay.
In both those cases, you had a sign that said, "Off..." When I was reading to the boat, "And camper outdoor storage available."
Mm-hmm.
Are you putting this sign out here? It's an offerance sign. So, you could have had this for thirty days in front of your... Where you're holding that business, but not all over everywhere else.
Okay.
So, you...
So, I can't advertise on Dixon?
Beg your pardon?
I can't put it on Dixon, is what you're saying? Okay. So, just in front of the actual property?
Correct. If not, it's deemed as a offerance sign, which isn't allowed.
With a thirty-day plan...
I didn't know that since I have that corner lot, too. I didn't know that that was an offerance.
Your employees do. If you want to put a banner or something up, this man right here is very good about working with people, let him put a banner. If you come up and contact him, tell him what date you want. He's real easy to work with. For many people who want to stay within the guidelines that we have set, it would deeply be appreciated. That's all I have. Any other questions from the board?
With this facility in this zone, are there any requirements as far as any type of screening or landscape requirements?
We will need to screen that from the public, yes. Yes. But all were necessary, so we don't know.
I understand that. But before I vote on the zoning, I want to know if there is a mechanism.
Especially with the camper storage, yes, to be screened for...
Are you planning on putting structures on a lot?
No.
What is your vision for how this would... I mean, just fencing?
It's already fenced in. It's already lit. It's already got a growl pad there, which is... This was the yard that the utility company used.
It's played down yard at one time.
Yeah.
Good.
That's what it is. So, we haven't done anything structurally to it other than killed weeds.
Okay.
Okay.
So, but there will be screening added?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the board before I call for vote? All in favor of case P two-seven Z two-five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passed. It will now go to the common council and presented there by councilman Greer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next case, Mr. President, is case P twenty-eight Z twenty-five. Petition of MX two Investments LLC requesting Kokomo City Planting Commission petition and recommend Kokomo Common Council for changes in zone classification from R three, medium density residential, to MI low density multifamily residential. This is for property nine oh one East Sycamore. I should say M one, I'm sorry. Nine, M one, nine oh one.
Move to approve?
Second.
Whoever represents this case, please come forward.
Hello, Michael Mygran. This is Michael Plummer, five one three Hillcrest Drive, Kokomo, Indiana, four six nine oh one. So, this building has been used for quite a while now as a five-unit property. Our intention is to do an extensive remodel of the property and create a four-unit property there.
Any questions from the board before we ask staff report? Director, sign.
Staff report for case P twenty-eight Z twenty-five, MX two Investments LLC is requesting a change in zone classification. The current use of the structure is multifamily residential with five units. The purpose of the rezoning request is to make the existing multifamily structure legal. Per the current City of Kokomo zoning ordinance, this area is not located within any overlay. According to the City of Kokomo zoning ordinance, low density multifamily residential allows up to four units. Petition is decreasing. The number used from five to four, this zoning district is compatible with the zones at all of this parcel. The zonings around this parcel are to the north, R four urban residential, and R five urban residential; to the south, R three, medium density single family residential; to the east, R three, single family density residential; and R four urban residential; and also to the west, R three, and R four. According to the City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, this section of East Sycamore is located in an area proposed for medium density residential. Medium density residential is single-family housing in various types between three to six units, dwelling units per acre, typical medium density housing would be single-family, detached, duplex, triplexes, condominiums, townhomes, and cluster housing. Land use goals to encourage orderly and responsible development to promote health, safety, and quality of life of residents in the City of Kokomo while maintaining Kokomo as a leading community for affordable housing. Relevant land use subject is our encouraging adequate land for residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, and recreational uses. Designate specific districts in the community suitable for residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, and recreational uses. The goal of the City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Transportation Map is to enhance connections throughout the city for improved safety function and efficiency for all modes of transportation, including vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian networks. According to the Transportation Map, this area of East Sycamore Street is defined as being a minor arterial. A minor arterial is a street that collects and distributes traffic to and from collectors and primary arterial streets. The traffic count for this area of East Sycamore is one thousand four hundred and thirty cars per day. The staff desires the board forward a favorable recommendation to the Kokomo Common Council.
Any questions from the board now with that staff report?
Are you planning on doing anything with changes in parking? The remodel would be exclusive to the building itself?
So, the parking is actually pretty substantial there now. There's a large asphalt pad on that west side. There's also two structures. There's a detached two-car garage along the south side, and then there's a detached one-car garage also. And then, again, on that west side, there's quite a bit area for parking there. So, as far as doing more for parking, it's not really needed. We do plan to maybe like stripe it and assign spots, but there's nothing else needed from our perspective.
I just want to make sure from a traffic standpoint, there wasn't going to be any change. This is a reduction in density anyway, so, you know, from my standpoint, I'm okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to deal with some kind of crazy driveway or something, and I'm going to be yelling at her like I do.
No, the driveway and the garage is essentially going to stay how they are now.
Do you have any spaces between the garage and the...
No, we actually... Yes.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? If you're going to call for vote, all in favor of case P eight Z two-five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now goes to the common council and presented there by councilman Greer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next case, Mr. President, is case P twenty-nine Z twenty-three, Z twenty-five, sorry. Petition of SG two properties LLC requesting Kokomo City Planting Commission petition and recommend Kokomo Common Council for change in zone classification from R one, very low density residential, and R four urban residential, and NCA neighborhood commercial to M two general multifamily residential. There's a lot of parcel number here. I'm not going to go through this. This is at the Universal Park. This is... So, the next four cases are all about this particular development. So, I'm not going to read all of this.
It is almost all makers. Let's just put it that way.
Move to approve. Lieutenant and Honesty Council approve.
Second.
Andrew Rushi representing Six G two Properties, twenty-six fifty-three Duncan Road, Lafayette, Indiana, four seven nine zero four. We're here today, this is step one of obviously multi-steps today to combine lots along the fountain and boulevard for the purpose of doing a multifamily planning and development. It's kind of the endgame of this, but this is step one to get the current zonings of the lots combined into M two, so that we can then go to M two P U D. Any questions?
Any questions from the board before we ask staff report? Director, sign.
Staff report for case P twenty-nine Z twenty-five. Six G two properties LLC is requesting change in zone classification for the parcels listed above. All lots included in this zoning are required to be subdivided in order to become buildable lots. These lots will be used in future EDD use multifamily development. The joining property uses to the north, R four urban residential, NCA neighborhood commercial, and OC office commercial; to the south and east are both PR parks and recreation; and to the west is a park and recreation, and R one, very low density residential. According to the City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, the parcels indicated are located in an area proposed for park and recreation. Parks and recreation is defined as being an area of land use designated for parks, recreation, or open space. These properties can include privately owned parks, recreational facilities, and/or open spaces that do not have to be publicly accessible. Land use goals to encourage orderly and responsible development... Land use goals to encourage orderly and responsible development to promote health, safety and quality of life of residents in the city of Kokomo while maintaining Kokomo as a leading community for affordable housing. Relevant land use subjects are to encourage adequate land for residential, commercial, industrial, institutional and recreational uses, designate specific districts in the community suitable for residential, commercial, industrial, institutional and recreational uses. The goal of the City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Transportation Map is to enhance connections throughout the city for improved safety function and efficiency for all modes of transportation, including vehicular, bicycle and pedestrian networks. According to the transportation map, this area of East Bollard and South Fountain is defined as a major collector which is a street designed to facilitate collection of traffic from local streets. Also provides circulation within neighborhood areas in convenient ways to reach arterial streets. The traffic count of this area of East Bollard and South Fountain is four thousand one hundred eighty one cars per day. The proposed zoning change is compatible with all surrounding zonings. Therefore, the staff desires that the board forward favorable recommendation to the Kokomo Council.
Any questions on the board now with that staff report? Any questions from the audience? Any no questions, I'll call for a vote for case P two nine Z two five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries and now go to the common council presented there by councilman Regu.
Okay, next case, Mr. President, is case, uh, P thirty Z twenty five petition of six G two properties LLC requesting Kokomo City Plant Commission petition and recommend Kokomo Council for changes of zone classification from M two general multifamily residential to PD, M two planned development. Again, this is the twelve acres that we just, uh, did the rezoning for in previous case.
Move to approve, intended upon city council approving PD or PUD.
Second.
Someone here to represent this case, please come forward.
Andrew Rushi representing six G two properties, twenty sixty three Duncan Road, Lafayette, Indiana, uh, four seven nine oh four. Um, again, this is, uh, just the second step for, um, going from M two to the PUD. Um, the, the PUD, really the reason we're asking for the PUD is we do have a small piece of commercial um, that's a part of this project. Um, it affronts a long bollard avenue. Um, we're, we're envisioning a coffee shop or tea shop, um, that can help support the neighborhood and also the development that's coming in. So just a kind of a small retail space, there's only, there's three thousand square feet of retail space that just affronts bollard there. And the rest of it would be multifamily use on the remaining part of the property. There'll be some outdoor parks, um, there'll be some walking trails. Um, we have a, a, a large vacant wooded area that is, will not be developed as part of this as well because it's, it's a bust of the flood plain of the creeks. We'll have some nice wooded areas, so it's really got a little bit of everything. Uh, we think that the community will, you know, have a nice, nice piece of housing addition that they don't have today.
Any questions on the board before I ask staff report? Director Seattle.
TJ, a question for you.
And I agree with you, I can't read in your mind, and I think we read it the last time.
This is exactly the same as the first, other than we're rezoning now from the M two to the, M two PUD.
Yeah, so if the board wants, you can make Greg reread the entire staff report or if you're able to pay attention to the last case, the staff report is exactly the same except we're going from, uh, M two to M two PD, which is the PUD.
Correct.
I couldn't remember that far back, I think we're okay.
Okay.
We got any problems with that?
I can read the petition.
That's great, all right.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the board now, we revisited in our mind the staff report. We're going to now call for a vote, all in favor of case P three zero Z two five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries and now go to the common council presented there by councilman Regu.
Okay, next case, Mr. President, is case P thirteen P twenty five petition of six G two properties LLC requesting approval of primary and final plat for six G two properties minus subdivision. Again, this is the twelve acres that we just did in PUD.
Move to approve, intended upon approval of the council.
Second.
Torrey Trip Engineering Consulting four oh one South Second Street Converse, um, representing six G two properties. Uh, this is the plat, and we are asking for approval on the primary and final. Um, it is one lot, there is, it's, there is a, a section, it's one point seven seven five acres that's non-buildable. Um, Andrew talked about that, that that area will be left wooded because it's in the flood plain and, uh, the rest at some point will be, uh, developed. Um, we had a few changes during tech meeting, all those are contained in the final plat, so we're asking for approval tonight.
Everything I asked for a plat was taken care of.
Uh, I got a couple questions, just clarifications. Uh, thirty four single one bedroom and two hundred and eighteen two bedroom?
There's some three bedroom, too. Yes. It's heavy on two bedroom and three bedroom. And I, there's only just a few one bedroom if I remember correctly.
And Director Seattle, we went by the new guidelines as far as one point three, one point five, one point seven as far as parking places.
Correct.
The PD we just approved is one point four seven, one point four seven three, just across the board.
Yes.
That's what we just approved. That was contained in the PD.
Disagree, but never mind. Uh, I'm a part of you on here.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? We're going to now call for a vote on PD number.
This is required.
P thirteen.
P thirteen?
Yep.
Okay. P, P thirteen, P twenty five. That's right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, now goes nowhere.
Okay, next case, is case P ten A twenty five petition of Trip Engineering Consulting requesting development plan approval for the villages of University Park. Again, this is the, uh, this is the property that we've been, you know, for the last three cases. And this will file approval for the, uh, development plan.
Move to approve, intended upon cases for bypassing city council.
Second.
I need you to enter yourself.
Torrey Trip Engineering Consulting four oh one South Second Street Converse. Um, this is the site plan development for the villages of View Park. Um, this will, it will have a total of five buildings, um, in this initial phase. There's, initially, they're going to build three, um, and then the other two will be built later and then there's a piece that will be developed eventually and that will have a separate site plan development when we get to that point. Um, this initial phase with the three buildings, two of them will be strictly apartment buildings and then the one will be, it'll have apartments, it'll be the clubhouse, and then we'll have the retail. Um, we did have a few comments during tech meeting, all those were included in the final drawings and so tonight we're asking for approval.
Any questions on the board on development plan approval?
Everything I asked for a plat was taken care of. So there's five buildings, three are part of the initial, but are all five of them, they're part of this?
The site plan development, yes.
And those would have to be done within the two years to be, the way you just come back for reapproval, correct?
Yeah, they'd be subject to the expiration.
Yeah, yes.
After the building, I think it's, sorry, the permits building.
Correct.
Okay.
Has to be started.
Has to be started, right, within the two years after the permit's pulled.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions on the board? Any questions from the audience? We're going to now call for a vote, all in favor of P ten A two five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Development plan is approved. Director Seattle.
Yeah, our last case, my idea is a TIF, so I'll turn that over to TJ.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Thank you. We didn't have any time. Uh, this is a TIF plant commission order number twenty twenty five oh five. In order to plan commission determine that, uh, declared toward residential economic development plan for the BCG economic development area conform to the plan for development for the city. So that fits within the comprehensive plan, this is a, another site specific TIF. Uh, we worked across through the state, it's a forty five million dollar project. The hundred ninety two minutes, it's a mall, I think there may be a little commercial. And it's to the west of Northwest Park and it is being done by crowning brown capital. Have any questions that you have? This includes ready money as well, so these are some of the state regional funds that came in and a big chunk of this is state that is moving in.
I have, I do have a question.
Yep.
Normally we do a PUD because it's two different zones, it's something, right? You're going to, you're going to have a commercial and your residential.
Right. Are you, is that on this, this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Because of the PUD, that's why it's a PUD, right?
Well, this is a TIF plan.
I mean, the TIF, but it all considers all that, right?
The PUD would come later.
It just comes.
It would be like the last one, yeah.
But you
That was a ready project as well.
Okay.
So the TIF, all this is saying is that this project fits within
So this is just, okay.
The plan for the city.
Okay.
But that's part of the statutory process to get tax increment finance. Does that make sense?
Yep, I just want a little clarification.
Any questions, comments on the TIF?
How big is it, TJ? Is it thirteen acres, eleven acres, twenty five acres, you know?
I don't know the site size. I know this is a rather large parcel just west of North
Just west of North
East of the open field.
Plus the old Buckingham.
Yes. Yeah. I was just going to suggest that we, for, for the board members, this came before us a year and a half ago, I believe it was, uh, it was a project called Buckingham, uh, basically the same project. Uh, that group, uh, decided not to move forward. Now, this brand new group has now came in and it's going to be pretty much the same, uh, that we originally of course thought would come back with, uh, development plan and a PUD if they decide to do that route. Just like, uh, we always have to do, but this, this came before the board once, but this is basically that exact same lot that we're by the question.
Did it come to us as a TIF then, or did we rezonate?
No, I think we rezoned it.
That's what I, yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, we did not do a TIF.
So we rezoned it and what we're basically being asked to now is to affirm what we rezoned.
Yes.
Essentially, yeah.
Is that, is that the lane between Justin and Church? Is it Justin?
It doesn't, it doesn't go that far. Go to the first house, essentially.
Part of that, part of that, I guess.
Any other questions on the board? Any questions on the TIF in the audience? We're going to now call for a vote, all in favor of TIF order number two zero two five dash oh five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I have a little bit of this, my, just president.
Next thing, any digital approval claims?
Uh, move to approve the claim in the amount of twenty six thousand eight hundred seventy seven dollars and forty one cents.
Second.
Any questions, comments on the, on the claims? All in favor of approval of claims, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Claims approved.
And there are new cases for the Ohio County Plant Commission.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Aye.
Thank you.